Okay, I call the order, the Roseville Board of Commissioners' regular meeting, February 6, 2024. Just want to welcome everybody in attendance. We have a full house tonight, so appreciate you coming. We will first stand due to Pledge of Allegiance and then Reverend Lynn Wett Long Jr. will lead us in the invocation, if you would. Thank you.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You're God. We again thank you for this day. We thank you for this opportunity to come together. And Lord, we ask that you be in this place, that you allow us to do the things that will be pleasing to you, but also to the people of this great town. We thank you in advance for those things and so much more. In Jesus Christ's name we do pray. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Okay, like I said, we've got quite a few people. Appreciate you coming out. We're going to start the meeting with a recognition and then a proclamation. So first, first I want to recognize a person that served a long time on our, one of our boards, actually our Parks and Recreation Board. She goes back a long ways in heaven and serving with us. I appreciate it, Merk Kaye. And I just want to read, she wrote this, so this is coming from her. And she wrote a little bio for us to kind of understand the dedication that she has made in the last, since 2002 here, which was that 20, 22 years. And that's a long time. And you know, I think you ended up here by saying you don't, you're not going to stop either, but you're just not serving on this board. But I do want to read this because it is a fantastic little bio here. So if it's okay with you, you mind if I read it? Okay, thank you. Merk Kaye Power started with the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board in 2002. This was before there was a Parks and Recreation Department and athletics were being run by the GRAC Committee, the Greater Roseville Athletic Committee, which was led by Marvin Purry at the time. All volunteer, everything about it was volunteer. So they did a really great job back then in doing that. Joined the Parks and Recreation Board shortly after coming to Roseville, moving into the former mayor's house, which is Joe Winfrey. The weekend Mark and I moved into, moved in was Recreation Day with the Recreation Day Parade in front of the house. The parade was later being, being on the board, the parade and later being on the board was a great way to start meeting neighbors and learning more about Roseville, getting engaged, really. So many things have changed from 2002 to 2023 for both the Roseville Parks and Recreation and in Roseville. I was able to see a new department started that has grown into what it is today. There are now a suite of offices where once there was just a old, small bank building. Although Roseville Main Street Park had already been planned, a land purchase before I moved to Roseville, being part of the Parks and Recreation Board, I was able to see the park come to life, livery in my backyard, from the zebo first starting to be installed and just a zebo. That was it. That's what we started with, right? The, the brick sale, if I recall, one brick at a time, to the first playground being erected. A few years later, the Parks and Recreation Board worked hard on the Main Street Park expansion, bringing in all the rest of the trails reached for, for the 35 acres. Important things I remember over the years, including Main Street Park Extension, Mill Bridge Park, Nature Park, 401 Bypass in the future. I'm happy to have been part of the first Roseville Fall Fun Fest that was started, a yearly tradition along with other programs such as free movies and concerts. I am also glad to have played a role to ensure the walkable culverts under the 401 bypass were not overlooked by DOT. And they almost was. I mean, I think you and Gil Hardest, I don't know if you remember Gil, you know, y'all worked very hard to make that, make those four under there. And we will use them one day. It won't be long. These culverts are a big part of the overall Greenway project and will be used to connect Roseville under the bypass to other greenways and parks planned through the east, including upcoming Fraser Farm. I am happy also to have represented the Park and Recreation Board on many other town committees, including the 175th Celebration Committee, which was our birthday of the town, 175th. And more recently, the Mural Committee, bringing three murals into the Roseville locations. I'm looking forward to see what comes in the future for Roseville Parks and Recreation and also being active. You don't have that in here, but also being active in that. With 20-plus years watching the town grow and thrive, I am sure I am overlooking much of what has been done. I'm just happy I was able to be part of it, a small part of it, but really a big part of it. I started to leave the small out, but of course you did so much. But I just want to thank you. I mean, I know, I know 2002, we were, we was a very small town back in 2002, didn't have any money. We have, Amy, I know she, I don't think she's here now, but she would be upset thinking that we had no reserve at all. I mean, we just, it didn't have anything. So and, yeah, and volunteers like Merk Kaye back then is kind of what, able to get what we got done. So I want to thank you. And I got a little small plaque for you. If you don't mind, meet me up here in the front. And Board, if y'all want to kind of somehow get in the picture in the background here, everybody, we'll see how we can do that. Okay, next, next item, as everyone is aware, this is Black History Month, February. And I do have a proclamation. We always do one. And this one, we enter as a proclamation for 2023 here, or 2024, I mean. And so I just want to read this. A lot of times, we don't read proclamations in the fullness, but this one is pretty important. I want to, I want to read this one for everybody as it's written here. So this is a decoration of the Town of Roseville celebrating Black History Month. Whereas the theme of Black History Month 2024 is African Americans and the arts. And whereas much of the Town of Roseville honor, strength, and statue can be contributed to diversity and cultures, traditions that have celebrated by the residents of this great town. And whereas African Americans have played significant roles in the history of North Carolina economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development while working timeless to maintain and promote the culture and the history. Whereas the results of these determinations, hard work, and perseverance, African Americans have made valuable and lasting contribute, contributions to the Town of Roseville and our state, achieving exceptional success in all aspects of society, including business, education, politics, science, and arts. And whereas, the 1976 Black History Month was formally adopted to honor and affirm the importance of black history throughout our American experience, which goes back thousands of years, including some of the greatest, most advanced, and innovative in our society, in our history, that we can draw inspiration from. And whereas Black History Month is a time for all Americans to remember the stories, the teachings of those who helped build our nation, took a, took a stance against prejudice in building lives and dignity and in opportunity, advance cause of civil rights, and strengthen families and communities. Whereas during Black History Month, all Americans are encouraged to reflect on the past successes and challenges of African Americans and look to the future to continue to improve society so that we live up to the ideals of freedom, equality, and justice. Therefore, I, Ronnie Curran, Mayor of Roseville, do hereby proclaim, February of 2024, as Black History Month in Town of Roseville. And I signed it and we'll kind of display that. So great tribute. Anything from the Board? Anything the Board want to add? No? Thank you. I will, I will say, usually I do this at the end, end of the night, but I'm gonna go ahead and do it because it's so fitting to do it at this time. But I have a, I have a podcast I do monthly. And this one, on February 8th, which is Thursday of this week, is dedicated to Black History Month. And I got two great guests that's going to be on to talk about this, that, one, I'm actually experienced a lot, that I kind of read here. And so, you know, if you, if you can, Tuesday night, Thursday night at 7 o'clock, tune in for these two guests that will be on there. One is Tony DiRico, and some of y'all might know Tony. He's the president of the Windale Wake County branch of the NAACP. Very important in our community, and we will talk to him about, you know, what he feels like black history means to him. And then the other one is Sigmon Zilic. And some of you may know her. She's a, she's an icon here in the community, a very big icon, you know, she's done a lot of things. And she, she has a very interesting story to tell, and she's going to share her history and stuff with us too, Thursday night. She actually lived in Washington DC for many years of her life. And I would, I would think Washington DC is probably ground zero for a lot of the civil rights stuff going on, you know? And, you know, she experienced that. She experienced some of the things that, you know, we talked about here, like the, the Black History Month was finally adopted, and she was part of that. And she's going to tell her story, some of her memories there. So if you, if you can, Thursday night, tune in. Like I said, I usually say this for the end, but I think it was very fitting to mention that during this segment. So anything else, Board? All right. While not hearing any, we will move into our business for the night. First is the consideration approval of the agenda. And I do believe there's a couple requests to change the agenda. So Meredith, if you would come up and kind of explain to us what has been requested.
Certainly, Mayor Curran. We have two applications for Harris Creek Farm, a rezoning and an annexation. The applicant is requesting to continue those legislative hearings to a future meeting in order to revise the concept site plan and update some of the conditions. And then for the other item, the Woodleaf Assemblage, the applicant is asking to postpone that application until the next meeting.
Okay. So that one was never advertised, anything?
That one was never advertised. Harris Creek Farm was. And then for Woodleaf, their reason for asking to postpone is they are still working on some conditions and some edits to the conditions of approval.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly.
Any questions for Meredith? All right. So any other, any other considerations for adjustment to the agenda? Any other considerations anybody have? All right. I think, I think I heard her ask that we consider continuing the 10B item to a future date. And we'll determine that in the consent agenda. So, you know, I need you guys to make the, make the determination of what that continuation date will be. And then the other one is, is just a rescheduling of the item 10C there, that wasn't, never really advertised. So if the Board, if the Board is willing, please make a motion for the approval of the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda with the following items being changed. Item 10B, Harris Creek Farm, to be rescheduled to a date to be determined by our planning board, correction planning staff, as well as item 10C, a request to, for the Woodleaf Assemblage to be rescheduled to our March 5th Board of Commissioner meeting.
Commissioner Alston, the continued case needs to be continued to a date selected by the Board.
Just do that back.
So if you flip those, I think, or make either, make them both March 5th at 7 o'clock, you'll be all set.
So do you concur?
I concur, sir.
Make your motion change on that. All right. We got a motion to adopt the approval of the agenda with two item changes. Item 10A to be continued and item 10B, no, 10B to be continued and 10C to be delayed. Is there any other discussion by the Board? I need a second first.
Second.
Is any second?
Second.
All second. Now, is any discussion by the Board?
None.
Not hearing any? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Not hearing any? I think it was approved. You want, you want to still put the delay in the consent agenda or just take care of it pretty much?
I think the Board has already done it.
Okay. I think we did. We took care of it all at one time. But that's fine. I mean, there's no complaints on that. So the next item is, is approval of the consent agenda. We got one item in there, which is amendments of the January 4th meeting. Is there any talk about that one?
No, sir.
Not hearing any? I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I think no poses on that either. Okay, thank you. We do have item public invited to be heard here. I know some of you may have come to speak at one of the legislative hearings. You know, you more certainly can speak tonight for three minutes during this process if you want to. Probably would be more beneficial to come back to the next public hearing we have about the item. But give me the, give me a sheet and I'll see who signed up. But if you came to speak and really have desire to speak on either one of those ones that's been delayed, you're more than welcome to do that. So we can do that. So first one is John Lufter. Is that right? Lufter? And this is on Terrell Drive, 112?
Good evening. I just really have a question that I wanted to ask. When Wake County did the reassessment of the houses and they published the reevaluation, they also published a revenue neutral tax rate that is proposal by then that gives the homeowners some kind of a guideline of to where their taxes may be. Does the town intend to do that?
Great question. Anybody want to answer that? Y'all want me to answer? But thank, thank you. I, I answer that question. So thank you very much. Anybody? Yeah, we, we will actually take up that item when we do the budget. So it doesn't take effect until July 1, when the 2024, 2025 budget is adopted. So we're working on that. Have no idea of, you know, where that would land yet. We do use that as a starting point, and then we'll, we'll develop a budget. So keep that in mind. We got a long ways before, before we get to that point.
Will any, will the homeowners have any idea of what that rate's going to be? Will the homeowners have any idea of what that rate's gonna be before you adopt the budget?
No, I don't think it's been published to us what it is, I don't think. Have you heard anything about what that rate is?
No. So we have not determined what revenue neutral is for the town. As you know, there are some assessments that we need to do on the level of service and different things that we want to be including in our budget, so that will impact that decision. Our budget retreat is scheduled for February 20th, and so that's the third Tuesday of this month. And that's where that CIP conversation will happen that will influence the board's decision on revenue neutral and where we'll land when it comes to our property taxes.
Yeah. So we haven't been committed, but they will. They will give us a number. Right now, our tax rate is 46 pennies, or 46 cents on the hundred. You may know that. So they will give us a new number, you know, with what they publish as a 50% increase, I think, you know, the new number will probably be in the low 30s somewhere, but we don't know that yet.
I was just curious, because I know using the 46, my taxes were double in the town of Roseville.
Oh, yeah.
So I mean, I started trying to figure one out on my own, and I think I ended up with a 28 or a 29, which kind of matched what the county was doing.
Right. Well, this board would determine what that tax rate is, but that will be determined when we do the next year's budget or the 24, 25 budget.
So there's a possibility we may find out before the actual budget is approved in June of what the approximate rate might be?
Budget goes through a public hearing, a series of communications and public hearings. So, yeah, you have plenty of time to speak on it if you desire to speak on it.
Okay. All right. That's all I wanted to ask.
Thank you. Good question. I know a lot of people will be asking that, so this is good that everybody heard it. So thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll come back. The next one I have is, is it Beetron Kearns?
It's fine. I'll wait till the reschedule.
Okay. All right. So you're gonna wait? All right. Appreciate that. And then it's Scott Wagner. Anything you want to speak on?
At the December council meeting, you guys received a written statement from me, since I couldn't be here in person, but it wasn't read aloud. To my knowledge, that email made its way to all of your desks. So this can be kind of kept short. I have really two things. One, aside from that, as the library for Roseville seems to keep being kind of kicked down the street, I thought maybe what would be great is if we could get a remote location where they could do holds and drop offs to go ahead and start doing that, maybe in Roseville, maybe a location here at Town Hall, where they could provide library holds and do pickups as well, to just start developing a relationship and a presence in our town. So I don't know what you can do with that, but wanted to ask that. But back to the thing in December. Mr. Kern, is your office still in the police station?
Yes.
I would like to ask the board to visit that topic.
Scott, just remind, you got three minutes.
I'm working through it. Now, I would ask the town council to reevaluate, but actually, it would be evaluate for the very first time. The initial arrangement was done without discussion, without voting, without citizen awareness, to my knowledge it was, unless I am wrong, a proposal, a deliberation, and a ratification done by the former town manager. It was clearly met with acceptance and approval from Mr. Kern, because you've been keeping an office there ever since, right? Well, I don't think it's appropriate. And I would like for it to be at least on an agenda, on a discussion, on a public, to justify reason why the town of Roseville is maintaining that office space for a part-time position of someone that's not in the police department. So I would ask for an immediate cease and desist of using that office space. I would ask until it is vetted and approved for you to, that's it. That's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner.
Absolutely.
Appreciate it. Okay. Any discussion, board? Okay. I did see, I think it was Betty Freeman's hand up. You want to come up and speak now? Was that your hand, I think I saw? I'll allow you to come up three minutes, Betty, if you don't mind.
Concerning the property tax, so it's kind of late for that. But anyway, I talked to the county tax office and never had that increased the valuation of property in Wake County, that did not decrease the tax rate. So if they do this time, don't this time, that'll be a new one.
And that's Wake County's taxes, right?
Yeah.
And I think theirs is 66 cents, if I remember Betty.
65.
65, 65, 66.
But they've always decreased it if the value of properties went up in a reevaluation.
Thank you.
And your office is in a perfect place.
Thank you, Betty. Hey, Betty, do you have any problem, you know, for being there, you know? Is it? No? Okay. Thank you, Betty.
If you do everything legal, you shouldn't have a problem with this one.
Thank you, Betty. Appreciate that. Yeah, you're right. You don't want to be there if you're doing things illegal, for sure. Is that right, chief? It is kind of funny, but thank you, board. Appreciate that. Thank you, Betty, for coming up, if you don't mind. Appreciate that. Who else? Anybody else want to speak? Come on up. And I believe you have visited me in my office, right?
I have. I like it. Works. It fits.
It fits? Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely. Yes, sir. My name is Chris Wilkins. I apologize for the lack of etiquette. So I just wanted to thank you guys. I'm the owner of the Work at Anytime, 411 South Main Street, across the street. Just wanted to let you guys know we're finally doing our grand opening. Wanted to invite everybody down. You guys have been great. We've had a whole lot of support from the chamber, actually, that's really helped us get this going, and we're just really grateful. So we're gonna have food. Friends, family are all welcome, but we're really excited. So thank you, guys.
Well, thank you. Appreciate you coming. Now, I want to, I wouldn't have done this, but, you know, being called out sometimes you get asked questions. But if I recall, you and your wife called me that morning, and I told you, come right to my office, and I met with you out of the blue, you coming from Apex or somewhere. Tell the story. I don't remember the story.
It was extremely convenient, actually. Everything that, excuse me, all of my interactions have been phenomenal as far as the support I've got from you yourself, actually, and your son have been a huge help in this process. But, yeah, me and my wife reached out, as suggested by Michael Farland, met with him first, and then he gave me your information. I called the office, left you a voicemail. You called me within probably 10, 15 minutes. We weren't even out of town. We were actually still right up the street from Roseville and came down, met you in the office. It was a very homey experience, to say the least. I felt very welcome, because I'm from the Raleigh area. So, yeah, it was very good to help us get grounded and, you know, help us feel welcome here in Roseville. And since then, it's been a good experience. So, yeah.
Well, thank you.
Yes, sir.
When's your grand opening? When is it?
It's this Saturday. It's from 12 to 5. We're doing the ribbon cutting, I believe, between 12 and 1. We're starting the food process around 1, between 1 and 5, or excuse me, 1 and 3. And as far as activities, they're gonna be throughout the entire afternoon. So everyone's welcome, like I said, friends, family. There's no cost associated with it. It's an opportunity to meet the team, really come in and just kind of get everybody comfortable and make some new friends. So we're excited. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Good having you in town. Y'all got a great, you did a great job fixing that building.
I appreciate it.
Thank you very much for that. Anybody else? One last time. I know we got some time here because we had two legislative hearings that was postponed. So anything else? All right. Next item is town board liaison reports. First one is Commissioner Austin. Veterans, anything to report, Commissioner Austin?
Yes, sir. Several things. Good evening. All right. Today, Massar Retired Jerry Matnam, well, I'm sorry, it wasn't today, but Massar Jerry Matnam held the Seven Fellowship Breakfast on 31 January at 9:30 IHOP in Knightdale. Eleven veterans attended. The next Veterans Fellowship Breakfast will be on 28 February, same bat time, same location. The next Coffee with a Veteran will be on 17 February at 9 o'clock, located at Ariz Co. Working Community Center, 300 South Town Circle. Volunteers are still needed, and you can reach out to Massar Retired Jerry Matnam, and his information is located on the town's website and the veterans. I'd like to announce that, I think last month I told you all that I had the pleasure of writing a letter for one of our teams to the Naval Academy. Their team reached out to me and invited me to a senior night, and little to my knowledge, he was accepted to seven different colleges.
Nice.
UNC Greensboro, UNC Asheville, UNC Wilmington, several schools in the Virginia area, but he decided to go with the Naval Academy. So very pleased about that. The Naval Academy will be paying for 100% of his tuition, room and board, medical and dental care costs for all shipment, and all they have is a five-year commitment to serve their country as a officer. So wish him best of luck on that. Also, on 24 January, at the Joe Fund Studio located in Wake Forest, the Joe Fund hosted a hybrid Veterans Coffee Connection. A representative from the Thrive program, which Thrive stands for Transforming Health and Resilience in Veterans Program. The Thrive program provides all participants, meaning veterans and first responders, who have a history of mild to moderate traumatic brain injuries or post-traumatic stress disorders, through a three-stage process, which consists of an evaluation-intensive outpatient program and a one-year follow-up, and also support for their spouses and their children as well. The Thrive program provides care to all of their first responders regardless of their service branch discharge status, so meaning that you can have a disarmed discharge and still would not be pushed away from this program. Could definitely believe that's not fair. Insurance coverage or location, they will fly you in. Their representatives there told me that they flew somebody from the state of Washington and put him and his family up for over three weeks for this program. This program is located at the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill, Go Hills, and can be reached at thrive@unc.edu at 984-215-5151. Also, Sergeant Major Retired Paul Berry, he is the Strategic Partnership Senior Director for Veterans Bridge Home, told us that the Sugar Bear Foundation is hosting a lunch and learn for the Gold Star Surviving Spouses at the Duty and Service Connected Losses. Their childrens, guardians, and support coordinators are all invited to a comp, learn about their programs, registration process, and all of their future events. In case you are hungry, lunch will be served free of charge. The location will be at North Carolina National Guard Joint Force Headquarters, located at 1636 Gold Star Drive here in Raleigh. I'm sorry, in Raleigh. Also, waiting to hear back from the United States Navy Commander about the Navy National Defense to that corps. He told me that the board is done, but it takes like almost two weeks for them to notify. So keep your finger crossed, but Roseville is still on their radar. So, and once this happens, if all goes through like we're hoping for, they should be starting 24, 25. Therefore, our kid would be in front of the Christmas parade this year. Just let you know. And, sir, that will conclude my brief.
That's a great report. Thanks. Appreciate that, Commissioner. Next item, Commissioner Austin, Public Safety. Anything to report on Public Safety?
We are still working to, we have two updates, one quick update. One update will come from the police, as they give their quarterly updates during the communications, the com stats. But in regards to fire, we are still working to unify. And just to give you a highlight of some of the things that have been done over the last month, they ran 120 calls in the month of January. Fifty-one of those calls were fire, 69 were EMS. It's safe to say that things are going well with the fire department, with the police department as well.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
And being, you know, you're the Commissioner of Public Safety, give Mr. Wagner a response to his.
Will do.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
We can make it later. I'll talk to you later. Thank you.
Next report is Commissioner Paul.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we know, people are still moving out of the Grande. They raised the rent significantly. If anyone you know needs help finding a new place to live, please contact our state senator, Mary Wills Bodie's office. Her staff has worked tirelessly to try and find places for people to live, to move to and live. Her number is 919-733-5850. Great people, and they're willing to help. I've been involved in exploring a potential senior affordable housing project here in Roseville, largely as a result of what's happened at the Grande. The project, if we can get it approved, would ensure that monthly housing payments will not skyrocket like they have done for many residents of the Grande. Project's in its early stages, so there'll be more talking about it in the coming months, so stay tuned. And as Ms. Freeman and others have mentioned, we're in the process of reevaluating our property taxes, and for seniors on a fixed income, there is help. Depending on your age and financial situation, you'd be eligible for financial assistance or up to 50% off your home value. Just log on to Wake.gov and search for Tax Help for more information. That's my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay. Commissioner Sneed, anything from Planning Board?
Our January 22nd meeting was canceled due to no rezoning applications being ready for review or recommendation. So our next meeting is scheduled for February 26th.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Bilga, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, anything?
Yeah, we had a meeting on the 24th. At that meeting, they chose a new chair, vice chair and secretary, received updates on the Millbridge gates and cameras that were installed. There's new fencing along Carlton Point Greenway now, received an update on the progress of the farm. Tonight, you'll be seeing a change of, a change request for the bylaws. They are also working to help out, discuss about a mission statement for the Parks and Rec Department. And then the Pierce Farm land, they discussed that as well. And the one other thing they did is they got to look at all the current CIP projects that Parks and Rec's looking at, and asked for their input on what projects they thought were more important and kind of ranked them, and they're kind of using that to help with the budget this year. So they kind of had, it was nice that they all got to put input into what we'd like to look at for long-term for Parks and Rec. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Good report. Appreciate that. Okay. We got one communication from town staff, and it's coming from the police department. Chief, good to see you tonight. All right.
Good evening, Commissioners, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, chief. Interim manager, town attorney.
Here's the police department's quarterly report. We'll start off with, I wanted to show you all the end of the year stats, 22 versus 23. You can see we had a dip in the UCR offenses. What UCR is to unify crime reporting is what we report to the FBI every year. And that's how they track crimes. These are crimes of different natures, murder, manslaughter, rape, different Part 1 and Part 2 crimes, fraud, robbery, different stuff, arson. As you can see, we had a decrease by 123. The biggest decreases for us this, last year was drug arrest. We were down 36, all other offenses, and then fraud. And the only increases were, for us last year, was vandalism and a And the only increases were, for us last year, was vandalism and assault. That was the only two categories that we saw arise in. And then if you look at the crash reports for last year versus the other ones, you can see we had a pretty decent increase, and majority of that came from the 401 bypass. We had 29 more vehicle collisions along the bypass. Along with, one of the big contributors was NC 96 Highway. So, if y'all can remember around the first part of last year, they started redoing the intersection there, Lewisburg and NC 96. And we had numerous collisions during that initial period.
Have they gone down?
They have. They have.
Got the signage really good up there now?
Yes, sir. Sinage and they repositioned some of the lights, the stoplights in all the directions, and that has helped out tremendous. So, we have seen a drop since all that has been in place, so.
Chief, can I ask about the 401 crashes?
Yes, ma'am.
Are they concentrated in any part, on any part of 401? Or is it kind of spread out?
It is, it is kind of sporadic. There's some at Young, which is, I think that majority of them are there at Lewisburg and 96, and then Young Street. And then we have a few at Lewisberry, Jonesville area, but they're very minute compared to those, those two intersections there, so. Moving on to the staff, January 12th, we held our annual awards banquet, and I want to thank Commissioner Long for attending and speaking to staff that day. Everybody appreciated you being there. During the banquet, we presented Officer of the Year Award to Lieutenant Courtney Williams. There were four officers who earned an exemplary service award. That was Detective Horton, Officer Pietrus, Officer Russell, and Officer Pogac. Sergeant Myers, I think as y'all know, we've mentioned before, she was recognized as the Town's Employee of the Year. And, and I'll back up. All these service awards, they're voted on and by their peers. So, these, we took a vote, and we actually did a QR code this year, which made it a little bit more convenient for them. So, all their peers are the ones who've weighed in on, on these awards. In January, two officers earned their intermediate certificates from the state, Training and Standards. And in November, two officers earned their advanced law enforcement certificate, which is one of the highest certificates that you can receive from Training and Standards in the state. And we also have one that's already submitted their paper, their application to be considered in quarter two of this year for their advanced law enforcement certificate. So, we're proud of our staff for doing that. So, staffing updates. We've, we have, as y'all know, we have two new officers. One who has started January 29th, Officer Philbeck. The other one is Officer Bowlin. He'll be starting with us on February 12th. And Lieutenant Holloway is retiring at sometime in the end of March. I tried to get him to stay on a little bit longer so we can get some of these new staff trained, but he said his wife wouldn't let him, so. Amongst his retirement, we held two promotional processes. One for the rank of lieutenant to replace Lieutenant Holloway, and the other one for the rank of sergeant. And Sergeant Myers, but all the processes are complete. Sergeant Myers was selected to be, fill the lieutenant promotion position. Officer Crawford and Detective Horton were selected for, to fill the sergeant, open sergeant positions. And still, we have one police cadet that'll be graduating Billy T. in March, and that's Cadet Kenyon. I believe he has taken his state exam sometime in the middle of this month, and then we're, we'll be in, in attendance for his graduation in March. So, we're excited for him to join us too. So, a lot of, a lot of changes coming with, when you have a promotion at that rank, it's kind of a ripple effect down the chain, so we have a lot of changes. So, with that being said, this is kind of what our organizational chart will look like with some of these changes. If you see the highlighted positions, they were, the highlighted positions in yellow were recommended by the Departmental Org Assessment that was presented. The one down there at the bottom, the Community Resource Officer, that's one that we're looking to propose in this upcoming budget, which also came from the Org Assessment. Everything else is staying the same. It's just, you see the two modified patrol sergeants. Currently, we have two modified officers. So, we found that our peak call volume is between that four and 4P to 8P range. So, we got that out of the assessment, so we've moved officers to cover that peak range. Those are the two modified officers. Currently, they report directly to the lieutenant that's over that squad. So, with the modif, with these changes and having the two sergeants, now we will have two modified sergeants, so that modified officer will have a direct report. Instead of going directly to the lieutenant, he'll have a sergeant to report to. And that concludes my report. Open for any questions?
Thank you, Chief. Any questions from the Board for the Chief? Good report, Chief.
Thank you, sir.
And congrats on that from Washington, D.C. as well.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
It would definitely help our law enforcement.
Absolutely. Big supporters, so. Thank, thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Good work. Guys do a good job over there. Appreciate all the hard work you guys do, so thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Pass that along to everybody.
Yes, we'll do.
We appreciate you a lot.
Yes, sir.
Communication staff, it's not really staff, but we almost treat the chamber as a kind of a close partner, and I do see the new chamber leader here, Philip Carter. I think it's your fir, is this your first meeting?
This would be my first.
You want to come up and introduce yourself? I'm not sure if the Board knows you, Philip, so come up and, some of y'all may have met him before.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to submit my letter of resignation. No, thank you. And absolutely, we would, the chamber would love to offer you an office if you, if you need one.
Okay, thank you.
Should you be kicked out or anything like that?
Appreciate that.
You can have mine.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
I'm Philip Carter.
I know you would do that too. I know you would.
Former business owner of Wake Forest, former corporate acolyte of Cisco Systems, arrived here in '06. I'm an expat Texan married to a North Carolinian. If I ever moved her out of North Carolina, they'd disappear me overnight, so I'm here for a while. I live up in Youngsville. Very grateful to be involved in the, the Roseville town, in the area, getting to know everybody, so thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Great to have a, a new person over there, so appreciate it. Thank you, Philip. Okay, couple old business items here. First one is Consider Approval Park Operation Advisory Board Bylaws Revisions. Is that you, Paul, or I don't see the, I don't, I don't see anybody from the Board. Is that you going to do that?
No, that's on mine, but...
Who's presenting that? Do we know?
That, that will be June, but he is not here. And so, I'm, I'm not sure where that miscommunication happened.
Okay.
I will check back with him.
All right. So, if he shows up, we'll circle back to it. If not, we will reschedule that one. So, Board does Item 9A. Other old business is Item 9B, Consideration Approval Appointment Tracy Goss to the Board of Adjustments. Mert, is that you going to do that, or? I think everything is in...
I can certainly help if needed, because we'd be very excited to get that final Board of Adjustment member.
Yeah, and, and I think Board, aware of this, is in the package. He is from the ETJ. He's in that side, this, on the other side of the bypass there, so. And he will require approval once we do it by Wake County, right?
That's correct.
Yeah. So, so Paul, anything you want to say, or, or anybody else on the Board? Anything y'all, April?
Glad to fill the seat.
All right. So, I will entertain a motion for that consideration?
Sir, moved.
I got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
You'll call. Got a motion, second. Any other discussion?
No, sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm not hearing any approvals now, so thank you, Board. Okay, next item is Item 10B, Consideration Approval of RE zoning for 23-6, which is 4124 Burlington Mills Road, Rural Fire Department rezoning case. So, so this would be a public hearing. I'm going to take your, I'm going to take your staff report first, and then I'll open the public hearing.
Great. Thank you so much, Mayor Kern. Good evening again. This is rezoning request 2306. It is from the Roseville Rural Fire Department, and the subject property is located at 4124 Burlington Mills Road. It's about a three-and-a-half acre site on the southern side of Burlington Mills Road. The applicant is asking to change the zoning from residential low to general industrial, general industrial conditional zoning district with a condition of approval that limits the uses to public safety facility and warehousing. So, just to make sure we're all clear on what public safety facility means and what warehousing means. A public safety facility is a facility providing safety services to the public. Accessory uses with that use include parking, cooking facilities, or holding cells within a police station. Some examples are fire station, police station, or emergency communication facility. With warehousing, a typical characteristic, a principal use would be indoor storage, climate-controlled or not, and storage would be of merchandise or goods. Accessory uses with a warehousing use would be the associated office space, parking, outdoor storage, or accessory wholesale sales. Examples would be mini storage or a warehouse. As per, per Roseville's Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map, the future land use designation of the subject property is medium-density residential. Let me put on my pointer. So, here is Burlington Mills Road over here. So, this whole section is medium-density residential, and that category is typically single-family detached housing with some townhomes and some multifamily, and some occasional non-residential uses, but predominantly single-family detached housing at an N C of three to five units per acre. So, this rezoning request is not consistent with Roseville's Comprehensive Plan for the following reasons. The general industrial zoning district is typically not appropriate adjacent to a residential medium district because there's a lack of transition between those uses. And without written details or a concept, sketch plan, or concept site plan, there's no information to gauge possible impacts of development. On the other hand, with the GI District adjacent to a residential medium district, a Type 4 perimeter buffer would be required between those uses. That's a significant buffer. It is 50 feet wide. It would include a berm, a wall, and quite a bit of planting. So, you know, when you have incompatible uses, one way to deal with that is with a solid buffer. In addition, public safety facilities generally function as a community facility, and warehouse-type facilities might be more wide-ranging, like a self-storage type use. So, at the Planning Board meeting in December, the Planning Board did recommend approval, 3 to 0. The vote was smaller. Wanted you all to know typically there are seven people. We had two absences, one recusal, and one vacancy at that time. Just based on the land use and the land use designation of medium-density residential, staff does have to recommend denial of this request because the general industrial district is inconsistent with medium-density residential future land use, and the application contains no concept site plan or any written specifics on what to expect. And it is tough to make that recommendation of denial when you think about, you know, an owner, but conditions do run with land and not with a property owner. And I'll leave that, the rest up to you. Any questions for staff?
Questions? Any questions? We'll call you back.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Mert. We'll open up the public hearing. I do know one question, one Commissioner has requested a refusal.
Yep.
So, any, anybody object to him recusing himself in this matter? Does he need to state the reason?
He, he does, as otherwise a Board member would be required to participate and vote.
Yes, I'm an attorney for the fire department, so on that basis, I'm recusing myself.
Board is okay with that?
Yep, thank you.
Attorney is okay?
Thank you.
You are excused, Commissioner. Thank you. Okay, with that, I will open the public hearing. This is for rezoning of the 4124 Burlington Mills Road, Roseville Rural Fire Department site. I will, I will ask, is anybody signed up to speak, Madam Clerk? No one's signed up to speak. Okay. Anybody want to speak on this matter? We'll give you three minutes of speaking time. Anybody want to speak? Anybody from the fire department want to speak anything? Everybody good? I will close the public hearing then. That was a short one. And I will ask, it shouldn't be any follow-up question, I don't think, Mert, but did the Board have any follow-up questions for staff before we go into deliberation? You know, did you have something, April, you want?
I, no, I spoke with Meredith earlier, so I just want to, I just want to hear Chief first and ask some questions, and I'm good for now.
Okay, the Chief didn't speak.
You're not going to speak?
Not unless you got a question for him. Oh, do you have a question for him?
Wait a minute, I'm confused. Is he not going to speak?
No, not unless you got a question.
Oh.
I closed the public hearings.
We presented to the Planning Board, Staff, Planning Board.
Okay, well then, then I do have some questions.
Yeah, since public hearing closed, you just answered the questions.
Sure.
Okay. So, so my only concern with this is that it is inconsistent with the, with the, with the, what?
Comprehensive.
Yes, comprehensive. Thank you. It skipped, it left me for a second. So, I would like to see added to your proposal that a condition that the land can only be used for fire department use, because my, my problem is with the warehousing. If for some reason you all don't build anything there, and the land is sold to somebody else, then we could end up with a warehouse there. And for me, I think that would be problematic for the town, so I think a condition needs to be added.
And originally, we were asking for a storage building for fire department, storage of vehicles, they should mention cooking, so on. Then, we couldn't use storage facility with the new LDO, so we had to change it to warehousing, which I think caused maybe some questions, but...
Right.
It's still a fire department facility that needs to be changed from residential to general industrial, to build the fire station, or whether it's a warehouse, storage facility for fire department equipment. It's still going to be, need to be rezoned from residential to general industrial.
Okay. I still would like that condition, specific condition, that can only be used for fire department use.
Right.
Because, as Meredith said, it goes along with the land and not the landowners.
I think that should, we've been working on this for well over a year. It's taken this long to get to this point, but I think that is in there, right? That's just public facility, correct?
The limited uses are public safety facility and warehousing. So, it says public safety, the warehousing piece could be any type of warehouse, so I'm...
That's my concern.
So, I think it should have been written...
I don't write, I don't...
So, I guess, I'm not sure, I guess staff, I thought, was writing it as public safety warehouse.
Right.
And I guess that didn't happen. Is that? Yeah, sorry.
There were, since there are two separate uses, there could be some text, you could volunteer to add some clarifying text to the warehousing use. As long as our town attorney, he looks like he might say something.
They're looking at you.
Condition could be added if it's acceptable to the applicant, which might read something along the lines of, "The warehousing use shall be limited to fire, public fire protection services."
Yeah, I thought condition one kind of limited.
Those are two different categories of use in the ordinance in two different sections. Warehousing as proposed by the applicant would be any sort of warehousing use.
Yeah, and that's what you thought you had anyway.
Yeah, it's 100% always been public safety, fire department use only, no, no transmission shop, no garage, no shipping warehouse. It's always been public safety. We had to change the terminology to match so staff could continue under the LDO, so that...
Right, so my only concern is if for some reason that you all did not build out there, and the land was sold to somebody else, it still can have any kind of warehouse on there that the new owners would want. So, as long as a condition is in there stating for fire department use only, then that limits what anybody else would be able to do with that land where it's not in your possession anymore.
Is that something you can put into your recommendation tonight, I guess? And that, that's perfectly fine with us.
So, the town cannot regulate who can use it. We can regulate how it is used. And... And it has to be something proposed and agreed to between the applicant and the board. We cannot impose it. So if the applicant says that that is okay, it would be an additional condition limiting any warehouse use to public fire protection services. It's not, it's not limited to the Roseville Fire Department.
And I'm here on behalf of the fire department, the fire chief, I said I'm, we're willing to accept that for the rezoning, yes.
Thank you. Any other questions? Because I'm kind of limited to just questions.
No, I'm sorry for my confusion here for a second. I was confused for a second.
We can, we work through that. That's no problem.
Thank you.
Any other, any other question? Frank, I think they got to ask you a question, so.
Go ahead.
Step up. Yeah. Frank, do you know of any information they need to, they need to know before they take it any further?
To give you a little background, we have a up-to-date permit from Wake County Environmental Services for use of the well and septic tank that are on the property. So they are, they are aware of what's going on, and I know that y'all basically have control over what we do now. You see, all this was planned before Roseville adopted the LDO. So we were caught kind of blindsided about having to go a different route to accomplish what we want to accomplish and provide a fire station for that part of our fire service area.
Thank you, Frank. Any other questions for Frank? Any other question? Thank you, Frank.
Thank you.
And, you know, I don't think what we're doing will ever limit from being able to use it as a fire station site in the future with it.
Uh, no, sir, as the first condition would cover that. That's a public safety facility.
I thought, I thought unless they change it, fire stations can go in any district or something like that.
Uh, you would, you would have me at a loss. I would need to check that.
I was thinking that was the thing, they could, they can put it in a residential section. But any other questions with the board? All right, I will turn it over to you for consideration of the rezoning of Burlington Mills Road, Roseville Rural Fire Department.
With the conditions.
With the condition, Dave, can you describe the new condition?
And, and I'll remind the board that the board has instructed the town attorney to not allow you guys to vote on new conditions without having staff had had a chance to look at it. So we're breaking the rule, but here we go. Warehousing uses shall be limited to public fire protection services.
Pretty clear.
Yep.
Pretty clear. Okay. So are you making a motion based on that revision that Dave gave?
Yes, but definitely want staff the opportunity to take a look at that.
I appreciate the clarity of the updated condition.
Okay, thank you.
Move to approve rezoning 2306, 421 Burlington Mills Road with the included conditions of approval.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion second. Any other discussion? Not hearing, all in favor, say aye. Not hearing opposed, not hearing any, unanimous, not a part. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thanks, Meredith.
I know you've been working a long time, so thank you very much on that. I'll lay out time for our commissioner to get back seated here.
Excuse me, do we also need to do a motion to adopt a plan consistency statement and statement of reasonableness?
You're right. Okay, we'll do that. All right, Boyd, you have approved motion of suggestion number one there, so she's asking for number two. Motion to adopt a consistent statement on reasonableness. I have a motion on that?
Yes, I'm moved.
Is there a second?
Second. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. You good on that?
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Commissioner Paul did not vote on that motion.
It's four, it's four, four votes, I mean, aye on that one.
One recusal.
All right. Really, we're getting down to the end of the agenda, so I'm going to ask the town attorney, do you have a report for us tonight?
Mayor Kern, I do not have a report for the board for our general open session, but if it pleased the board, a closed session might be appropriate.
Okay. We will entertain a motion in a little while for that, if the board sees fit. How about interim town manager? Do you have a report?
Yes, just a few things. Just wanted to update the community and also thank the board for your time on January, January the 19th, we gathered for our strategic planning retreat that we believe was very successful. The consultant that we are working with with developing our strategic plan, Fountain Works, is reviewing and pulling the information together, and we'll be meeting next week to talk about the findings and discovery from that time together. We'll be following that up with, the next step will be having another executive leadership to our kind of submersive strategic planning session to suss through that and clarify those different things, to figure out what those specific deliverables might be. And then we'll go to a more public-facing feedback session to the community. And so thank you for your time. And in general, just want to inform the public that the opportunity for you all to participate and give feedback on the town's vision, direction, mission, and strategic plan and initiatives will be coming for, will be happening in the coming months. That is not to be confused with the budget process, which is running concurrently, that you'll also have an opportunity to provide public comment and feedback on as well. The town's, the town's budget retreat will be taking place on February the 20th. That's, that will replace the usual work session that happens on the third Tuesday of each month, and it'll begin at noon. Again, that's a public meeting. It is advertised on the website. And so, community members are welcome to come and sit and listen and provide comment. I don't think, well, at some point. And so everyone is encouraged to come out to those, to that meeting. And just like a normal work session, it will be open to the public. On the 16th of January, we had an open house for Main Street Project. I was going to be bringing an update to you all on tonight, but with budget and all transparency, could not get to putting that presentation together for you all. And also, there were a few questions from the Main Street Open House that I felt like would be better to be addressed at the time of the update as well. The most important one is detours that will happen when the intersection is closed down this summer, as that would impact some of the, a lot of, well, all of the businesses that are there at Manon Young and also just general commuting and traffic. And so I'll provide an update on the Main Street Project, feedback from the community, and we will be providing information about those detours in March when I come before you, that first meeting of the month, with updates in general about the project. And so we are encouraging everyone to, if you have any questions or would like to meet or hear anything about updates on that Main Street Project, please reach out to us, reach out to staff. We have an ongoing process, well, yes, process of just communicating and engaging you all, be you a business owner or a resident, just ask questions. We're here to answer questions at all times. But that concludes my update. And I do have one request as well. With the budget meeting coming up, I had, had, had previous conversation with the mayor about bringing certain action items for approval during the work session. If it's a more procedural type approval, so bid document, in this case, the acceptance of a bid. And so we did bid out the Willoughby project. We had to go back and do some revisions to the bid tab. And so we have successively cleared that bid, but we do need to bring that back towards, back before you with an accompanying budget ordinance amendment. So there'll be a decision that we'll be asking of you for that. With your permission, I will, I can bring it before you as just a brief item at the top of the agenda at the budget retreat, or we can wait until early March. I will, I do recommend that we do move on it sooner than later. And so that the budget retreat on the 20th would be preferable, but if not, then I can reach out to the contractor to see if they will hold their bid or be patient with us for that March date. And so I just wanted to offer up that decision to you all to get your feedback on that.
Yeah, Eric, talk to me. I think we'll, that's more of an administrative.
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be quick. I'll give you an update on the price and all those different things.
Not a complicated legislative decision we have to make, and so I think we're good with that. I, if the board is, go ahead and include that.
Awesome.
Add in the workshop so we can keep it moving.
Awesome. Thanks for your flexibility on that.
Yep. Very good. And I want to, I want to personally thank Eric for the work as interim term manager. I think you're approaching your 60 days. If you ain't elapsed 60 days, you is right there.
Yes.
Yeah, so you've done, done a great job. Feedback from the citizens has been good from my, my hearing, so. Thank you for the good job you're doing. I don't know if the board wants to say anything along those lines, but appreciate that. Appreciate all the work you're doing, Eric.
Look no farther.
Thank you. Last, but not least, the town board. Any, any feedback from town board? Any reports from town board and communication-wise to the citizens, anything like that?
I covered everything.
Don't have anything? I mentioned the show. I'll recap one more time with the show. It's Thursday night, what is Thursday night, 8th? February the 8th is focusing on Black History Month, two great guests on there. So if you, if you're around 7 o'clock, can tune into that, that'd be great. So appreciate that. But that's all, that's all I have. Thank you for coming. And representing the chamber, appreciate, appreciate that, Mr. Carter, and thank you for coming out there. And is anything else? If not, I will entertain a motion. Does someone have a motion for a closed session?
I do. I move that the board go into closed session to consult with the town attorney. In order to preserve the attorney-client privilege, the board would enter closed session pursuant to Chapter 143, Section 318 dot 11A3 of the North Carolina General Statutes. The board expects to receive general counsel regarding the following eminent domain proceedings. Edens Family LLC, Khalil Privet Properties LLC, and Woods.
Okay, you have a motion there. Is there a second?
Second.
Our motion's second. Is any other discussion? Not hearing any? Motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No opposed, motion approved. And this is a adjournment into closed session, so just to remind everybody, we will be coming back after closed session, and if there's any type of action vote, anything to take, you know, we'll do that public after, after this session. So thank you very much. Appreciate that. Thank you for coming. Thank you for coming.